Welcome to today's city council meeting today, Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Here.
District three, Councilmember Otero.
Present.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand for the invocation by Tim Gianosa from the Big Valley Grace, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I'm going to start a little bit different. I'm going to read from Ecclesiastes, chapter three, something King Solomon wrote. He said, "There is a time for everything, a season for every activity under the heavens. A time to be born and a time to die, a time to plant and a time to uproot. Time to kill and a time to heal, time to tear down and a time to build. A time to weep and a time to laugh, a time to mourn and a time to dance. Time to scatter stones and a time to gather them, time to embrace and a time to refrain. A time to search and a time to give up, time to keep and a time to throw away. Time to tear and a time to mend, time to be silent and a time to speak. Time to love and a time to hate, a time for war and a time to peace, for peace." I've been asked today to take time, to take time for us to have a moment of silent reflection. As we remember, we mourn and we hope. We remorn, uh, we remember Sergeant Stevenson and who gave his life in the line of duty for our community. We remember and mourn Coach Dima, who served the youth of our community so faithfully and lost her battle to cancer a few short days ago. And we certainly hope for the safety and healing of our brothers and sisters in Southern California, including the many first responders that have been called into action. So please join me in a moment of silent reflection to remember, mourn and hope. Thank you for taking that time to remember those who have served and sacrificed and those that continue. As we move on to the business and meeting that is at hand, let me encourage all of you, our city leaders. This is a new year and you will be faced with things that are from the past and challenges that are new. There'll be much that will be difficult and much that will be full of joy and laughter. There'll be many debates, arguing, and along the way, there'll be unity and agreement. One thing is certain, as King Solomon encouraged his people, there'll be a time for everything. So be prepared and be ready for you will be called on in all of these times. Let me pray. Well, we thank you that we have men and women that have gathered here to serve this community and that they have given themselves in many different ways, hours away from their families and their time and their preparation. And they've served and are continuing to serve this community. Whether it be as a first responder or in our different municipal offices, or it be as teachers, educators or caregivers. They do much to make this an amazing place for us to live. They do much to help us move along each day and to further our advancement. And so we thank you for them, Lord. And they will encounter much, they will need time for it all, and there will be a time for everything that they're going to encounter. So we guys should give them wisdom, give them understanding, give them great knowledge where they lack it. And where they have it, may they use it well and for the benefit of others. And so bless them. And may you bless the people they serve. In your name we pray. Amen.
Today we have two presentations. The first one will be recognizing outgoing planning commissioners, Robert Katchel and Gary Del Nero. And I will ask the council to please step up to the podium and we will go ahead and give this, these gentlemen some plaques. So if I can kindly ask the council to come up there with me. I felt it was appropriate for Serena to speak on this and say a couple of words.
Today I would like to honor two outgoing planning commissioners, Mr. Gary Del Nero and Mr. Bob Katchel. The last twenty and seventeen years respectively, these gentlemen have served as the planning commissioners, leaving an indelible mark on Series' growth, development and success. Serving in this capacity for two decades is no small feat. It requires an unwavering passion for community development, a deep understanding of the complexities that come with growth and a genuine desire to make our city a better place for everyone. Commissioners, you played a pivotal role in guiding our city through a general plan update and did the city a big favor by agreeing to stay on two additional terms to get the document passed. You faced challenges on the commission like the Walmart litigation, but brought, but bright moments as well like the approval of the Series Gateway Project. You have continuously made thoughtful decisions and have helped create a vision for the future that is both ambitious and achievable. Your work has been integral to the planning and development of spaces where families live, businesses thrive and our community gathers. You've been a champion for sustainable growth, thoughtful land use and an advocate for the voices of residents. Your ability to listen, collaborate and lead with integrity has set a standard of excellence for all of us. On behalf of the city, the city council and the community at large, I want to express my deepest gratitude to you. Your commitment to excellence and your service to our city has made a difference in ways that words can only begin to capture. Thank you for your many years of outstanding service for your leadership, your passion and your vision. You have truly helped move this city forward and we are all better for it. We wish you the very best in all your future endeavors and we are forever grateful for your contribution.
Yes, I would. I suspect the first thing I'd like to say is thank you to my wife. Without, without her continuous report, uh, support over the years, it just made it a lot easier and I appreciate it. And also my son's here. So, and thank you, Mayor and staff for making it a easy, easy time through the years. And I noticed Ms. Montgomery's here. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you to everyone. I had just retired as a planner with a county when my daughter came to me seventeen years ago with a flyer which was in the utility bill seeking a planning commissioner. She said, "Dad, you should do this." Because I'd been kind of down about having to leave my work for health reasons. So I did, and seventeen years later, I'm finally putting it behind me and moving on with the, the golden years, I guess they call them at this point, huh? But anyway, I want to thank all the staff in the city, particularly Ann Montgomery, who has been outstanding almost through, not all of it, but most of it. Gary as a commissioner through all of it, he was here before I was. The elected officials, our mayors, uh, from the first up to right now have been very supportive of us. And it's been a great honor to be able to serve the city that I live in and love. So thank you very much.
So council, stick around. We have another one. Thank you very much. Well, we have a Design Build Institute of America National War for Mayor recipient for the regional surface water supply project, and this one will be presented by Sam Brown. So you can dive a little bit. If you didn't know, you're presenting, it says here that you are, so I'm sorry.
No problem. Mayor, this will not be presented by me. This will begin to be presented by the, uh, by the director for the regional for the SRWA, which is Chris Fisher.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Chris Fisher. Uh, I serve as a general manager for the Stanislaus Regional Water Authority that we call the SRWA. Joined to me, to me tonight, Selena Estrada. She's our plant manager there. Um, we're here to share some exciting news about a prestigious award that the SRWA recently received from the Design Build Institute of America, they know as the DBIA. DBIA annually recognizes projects that embody the best in design build practices, emphasizing streamlined construction or communication and collaboration, efficiency with faster project completions, cost savings, improved innovation and quality, fewer and less costly change orders, enhanced owner involvement and collaboration. The Regional Surface Water Supply Project has won a twenty-five projects nationwide to receive recognition as a national award of merit for outstanding project, two thousand and twenty-three. Got it? Perfect. This year's award categories included aviation, civic assembly, commercial office buildings, educational facilities, federal, state and county projects, healthcare facilities, industrial process, research facilities, rehabilitation, renovation, restoration projects, transportation and finally water and wastewater. A couple of the project highlights that we have, our final contract amount for this project was one hundred and ninety-seven million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, funding was about a hundred and eighty-five million in state revolving funds and low interest loans, thirty-eight million in grant awards. Construction metrics, we had fifty-five change orders. They were in less than one percent, point eight five percent of the final contract amount. We're, we logged six hundred and forty thousand total project construction hours. From a safety metric standpoint, in the forty-two months that we were building it, their total recordable incident rate, TRIR, was point nine four versus the industry average of three point nine. So we, we performed favorably there. Our days away restricted time rate was point three one with the industry average of two point one. So we also performed very well in that. Um, contingency use, we only used fifteen percent of the original contingency that was spent on change orders. COVID mitigation, we were, we were severely impacted by COVID. A lot of the, the voltage switch gear we were unable to get, but because of the design build process, we're able to work through that um, and really not delay the project. We had a lot of partners in there. Um, some of those are Jacobs Engineering. Uh, they were the engineering design build firm. Over at construction was a primary contract in Mountain Cascade and San Joaquin, uh, Valley Electric. They did all of the electrical work and some of the other construction work and then ICM and West Joe's were the advocate for us. Particular highlight of our success is, you know, we, we got this project off the ground and Selena Estrada, our plant manager, she stepped in right from the beginning, took charge of the starting up of the facility. It was a monumental task. They, you know, it's staffed with some of the best operators in California and really her dedication has been instrumental in the plant's seamless operation. Lastly, we, we send a heartfelt gratitude for the city of Turlock and the city of Series for trusting us to deliver this critical project. It's, um, it's been our privilege to provide safe, reliable water to our communities. Um, and I do want to, um, have a special recognition for Director Silveira and Mayor Lopez for their dedication to the SRWA board and supporting us through all of that. So thank you again for letting us be here tonight. Yeah, we gotta worry one. I gotta take this.
Let's take some photos. Let's take some, let's take some, let's take some heavy. It's not dropping.
Thank you once again. Moving on to citizens communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, doctor rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution number two thousand seven one oh six for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not the posted agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item. Subject to the five-minute provision, anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. And the rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. If there's any representatives from local, state or federal government here who would like to make a comment, this is the place to do it. Mr. Condit, did you have any comments today? Uh, we're going to have the representatives first, ma'am, if you don't mind. Want to give them an opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening, council. Happy New Year. I just have a brief, uh, report. Uh, we're hoping to, uh, host a community cleanup as we've done in the past several times now. Hopefully in spring, uh, we're shooting for, uh, better weather, possibly in, uh, the latter month of March, maybe early April. Um, and we hope to coordinate with Series Unified School District and hosting this at Central Valley High School. Again, as we've done in the past and it has been a success. So I will keep, uh, keep, uh, our city officials updated as things develop. But, uh, we're excited about these cleanup efforts and hope to beautify or continue beautifying our city. So thank you again for having me tonight.
Thank you very much. We have the garden club here today with a certificate from what it looks like. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm from the Garden Club in Series and I represent Penny Pines. And Penny Pines is an organization that re-promishes the forests by raising money. And I want to present a certificate to Joey, the Series Garden community. And, um, in honor of his, their support and helping us, and we want to present him with the plantation and the forest is so he'll have his name with the plantation.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
And I'm Barbara with the Series Garden Club and I'm here to present Mayor Javier Lopez with also a Penny Pines Plantation. They plant, uh, sixty-eight trees to refurbish the forest and we do this to people that we want to honor in our club that help us in the community to get things done to help the community out.
I really do appreciate that. I'll go ahead and grab it.
This is a letter that tells you.
This was, this is kind of a surprise to me and everybody knows how much I love trees. We, we joined, uh, Tree City USA when I became on council and I've been an advocate for the garden club and, and everybody who supports, uh, is putting trees in, in our community because that's one of the vital ways everybody breathes our air. So thank you very much. This is very.
This refurbishes the Stanislaus County.
Oh, it does?
We do the Stanislaus.
Appreciate that so much. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you. I do have two yellow cards. I believe John Silveira is here. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. All right. I've lived in Series since two thousand and six. Um, my wife and I bought over in East Gate area. Um, there's two situations, there are two issues I want to talk to you about today. Traffic and illegal fireworks. The situation with the illegal fireworks is now a year-round problem. Um, and I'm coming today because, uh, for in, well, every year it's a problem, but uh, this year in particular, uh, Fourth of July, I was sitting in my backyard with my family and the embers from the fireworks were falling in our yard and on our roof. We actually had to cover hose and hose it down. Um, it happened a year, you know, two years earlier than that. And that happens all night and, um, it, it was so bad. My son and I got in our car and we drove around the neighborhood, made a couple of turns and it had called into dispatch at least twelve addresses. And, um, I think we wrote six tickets this year. I shouldn't need to worry about or stress when I'm going to sleep at night, is my house going to burn down? Uh, my neighbor's house going to burn down? I know we don't, our police officers are busy doing, you know, God's work and our firefighters as well, but uh, we wrote fifty-three citations in twenty nineteen, thirty-nine in twenty twenty, thirty-four in twenty-one, fifteen in twenty-two, eighteen in twenty-three and six in twenty-four. It's not because of the fine, right, that the numbers are going down. We just don't have the, the, the manpower to keep up with the demand. Um, the man's gotten out of hand. So what I'd like to propose, uh, is if the city could consider raising the fines, make it so painful that people don't do that here. I think it's twenty-five hundred dollars, great start. What about ten thousand dollars? What about ten thousand dollars for a first offense, five thousand for a second, twenty thousand for a third? Make it so bad that people think about doing it here in Series, right? Can't hire enough police officers. I mean, we would need hundreds, but deterrence, right? Let's use deterrence, um, some really, really strong deterrence to get people to stop. Make it a misdemeanor. Maybe attach some community service to it. Drones maybe would be a good investment. Um, I think they can be used for other things. I just don't want to sit in my, my home and worry about my house burning down. New Year's fireworks are going off. Guess what I did? I'm checking my yard and my roof looking for burning embers because I don't want my house to burn down with my family inside. Um, so that's a concern. The other point that I like to talk to you about is traffic. We all know traffic's getting bad. Um, in the last couple, well, last two years alone, my wife's been rear-ended. Had someone run a stop sign broadside. I, we just have bad luck and my daughter a couple of weeks ago was run off the road over by the canal, almost ended up in the canal. Um, that shouldn't happen. I have a dash cam. I have drivers that run stop signs. I, I have to wait. They just run them. They don't stop. Uh, it's gotten out of hand. I've called, I don't know how many times, I've asked my neighbors to call. Um, we had a dog die. Uh, my wife pulled up parked in front of our house in the street, got out of the car with the dog. The dog got hit by the car and died. My wife, if she was where the dog was, she'd be dead. The driver stopped, started yelling at my wife. Um, it's just gotten out of hand. Houston is building what, four hundred houses or so down there? If all those people have cars, how bad is it going to get here? It's going to get bad. We just don't have enough police officers. Unfortunately, I know they're doing good work. Um, but again, deterrence, cat traffic cameras, Hatch and Mitchell. Used to be one car would run the red light. Now you got three, four, five cars, truck drivers, three trucks. I drive that route every day to work. Happens all the time. We can install some cameras, drones, other technology to help our, our police out. That would be great. But the situation is just going to get worse. And since I've lived here in two thousand and six, it has gotten worse. And I'm not saying the police aren't doing a good job. People are driving faster, they're running, you know, uh, uh, stop signs, red lights. It's just, it's just gotten out of hand. So I know you guys have a lot of other things to deal with. I hate to be here for, you know, talking to you guys about this. I'm just one person, but, um, I just, I really, I don't want my house to burn down. I don't want my family getting run off the road. I don't want to have my wife run into twice. The car's been fixed. I gotta have it back in the body shop. It's just, it's just old. Um, so I would appreciate it very much if you guys could, um, you know, maybe reconsider, you know, what we're doing and just stiffen the penalties, right? So deterrence, just make it painful. Series isn't the place for this stuff. Um, so thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next person I have is Frank.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Attorney, Manager. I've been receiving quite a few phone calls about a police officer visiting meetings of different clubs and organizations within Series' community. Some have been so shocked as when this officer walks in, he greets them and the children look afraid and I'm sure they're traumatized, but it ended in a good way, not a bad way. So I thought I'd get the bad out the way. This officer has represented his department really, really, really good. And I don't think anyone in the community has recognized him. And he's out there every single day. You want to read that for me? This is a girly obispo.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor and privilege to read this back to National Association for Advancement of Old People and International Health Administrative Services. Congratulations on your outstanding.
Chief, can you come up, please?
Chief, this is for you.
Your outstanding services to that Series Police Department, also your commitments to our community. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for the kind words.
Of course. Can we get someone to take our picture?
Yeah, we just, we just did. Set it up one more time. We'll do it again. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd certainly like to say a word or two.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, on behalf of of your association, I did not expect this, that's for sure, but I certainly appreciate it. I've been policing this city for about 30 years now, and it's quite the honor to receive this from you, for sure. I, like like many, I certainly don't do this for recognition, but it certainly is is nice to to be appreciated. And we'll keep at it, that's for sure. And thank you so much. Much appreciated. Thank you.
We will now open this up to anybody else in the audience who would like to make a comment.
You can all take a deep breath. I just wanted to let the city council know that I'm now a commissioner on the Stanislaus County Board of Aging. I represent District Five, which is Series. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me.
Congratulations. We should be clapping, everybody. Anyone else?
Evening, Mayor, City Council and City staff. Ronnie Meyer, President of Series Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to remind everybody that this Friday is our annual Series Chamber of Commerce Installation and Service Awards Dinner. So, if you haven't bought your tickets, now is the time. We have a few more tables left. I'd like to thank Mr. Casey, Mr. Martinez, Ms. Otero. Everybody bought their tickets and their tables. We appreciate it. We'd like to see a few more faces there. So, if you haven't got your tickets, come and see us. We're right across the street at the chamber office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else?
Genetically serious. First of all, I'd like to address these people behind me. That's all right. The people that come tonight and come in before this, if you can make it at least twice a month, that'd be really nice for these council meetings. And if you live in Series, that's even better. Well, we need participation. And through the years I've been coming to these things, pretty slim. And these people up here make judgments for your life and your life and the rest of these people's lives and where we live in our streets and communities. And I appreciate the coming tonight. There's an issue, that's really loud. There's an issue with, and a small issue to some people. Four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, they have a nice lunch program down the hall at the end of the last room on the right. I believe there's a code or law that says through the ADA, American Disability Act, that there has to be pushbars on these doors. If you look at every door in this place going out to try to get outside, they're all pushbars. There's one door that's never been addressed, and that's the door. There's a door, an exit door in case of emergency to get out of the senior lounge. It's the last room on the right. That hasn't ever been done. When I've asked about it, we don't have the funding. We don't have the money. They sure have money for other things. And that thing's been going on. I think I asked, I could be wrong, but I think I asked about this two years ago. If it's not two years, it's pretty darn close. That needs to be fixed. There's people, there's a lot of elderly people there. They don't have the ability to grip things. They don't have the upper body strength, even though, you know, their hands and stuff, they can use their elbows. And people with wheelchairs too that are low to the ground. If somebody's back there in a wheelchair, and there is a couple of people that come for those meals that are in wheelchairs. And we need to fix that. Come on, you know? I mean, this has long been talked about before, and it's one door, you know? All the rest of the ones that go outside this building so we can have the ability in emergency to get out, those exits are okay. But if you need any more help on that door thing, ask that gentleman back there, the captain back there. He was in that room one day with another officer, Mr. Johnson, Captain Johnson here. He was in the same room, and he had a hard time getting the door open. We laughed about it, you know? But in all reality, when something goes wrong, and we know in society we're seeing it every day, something went wrong, then we wouldn't be able to get out, those elderly folks. And he's a pretty stout, strong guy. And he had somebody else helping him to try to get the door open too. So, let's take care of that as best we can. Tonight, I'd like to congratulate, I didn't, I wasn't here at the last meeting, congratulate Serena Otero for her position. And I hope she does well. And there's an old saying, is that, no, I should know it. Common sense isn't so common. So, and this goes for everybody on the city council. Let's make common sense common now, you know? We all know what judgment is. We all grew up with right and wrong and what benefits the majority of us. Let's not sideline and pick things that that you want yourself, where you're there because people picked you to vote for what they want. It shouldn't be an individual task for somebody, but let's make it more common sense, you know? We all know what that is. And let's implement that so we don't have any problems like we've had in years before.
Thank you, Jane, for congratulating me.
Yes, thank you. And for Shirley Rogers there, I went to that thing for the county, and I invite anybody to go. It's very informative. You wouldn't believe all the stuff you can apprehend as far as your brain and listen to all the benefits of this county and probably other counties that give people in need. They're rampant, just everything you can think of. There's a, there's a program for you. So, if you ever get down there or there's pamphlets up here and you need somebody in your family that needs that for help, by all means, grab one.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? See, and none. Do we have any emails?
Yes, Mayor, we did receive one email for public comment from Prince Vic, and it states District Two needs to be included in all and every committee appointments from Monday 13, 2025, to when we elect new council members.
Thank you very much. Is there any other than that? Okay. We will now close Citizens Communications and move on. Is there any conflicts of interest from the council? See, and none. Moving on to appointments, boards, and commissions. Item C, appointments of Vice Mayor for a two-year term. I would like to nominate Daniel Martinez in motion that he be the Vice Mayor for the next two years. We'll open this up for a discussion from the council. See, and none. This out to the public for any comments, sir?
Genetically serious. I know we have to have somebody in that position, but through the years, I've never seen anybody, any other members on the city council said, I'd like to have that position. You know, is that acceptable? Is that something the city attorney's going to say yes or no? Or it seemed like somebody, somebody else might want it instead of just one person appoint somebody or I think, I know they got a vote and stuff, but I'm surprised nobody else through all these years has said, well, he wants it, well, I want it too, you know? So, it's a question.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? See, and none. Did we receive any emails about this item?
There were no emails received, and there's no hands raised on Zoom.
I have a motion on the table. Looking for a second. We.
A second?
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey. Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero. Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Congratulations. You are now the Vice Mayor. Now, we will move on to commission, excuse me, the confirmation of the 2025 mayoral appointments on boards, commissions, and committees. And I will open this up for comments from this city council. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The nominees that you have on the page are interesting. I wonder if you spoke to any of them about the particular assignments. I note that a couple of them where you've taken the people that were on it before and removed them. I'm interested in, did you have, you know, I realize the Brown Act, you can't talk to all of us, but did you talk to each one of these individuals that you appointed to the?
As I've done in the past, no, Mr. Casey.
No?
No. And for the second of moving multiple folks from different positions, I've given everybody an opportunity every single year to be in a committee different than the years previous. So, I hope that answers your question, sir. Rosalinda?
When I kind of noticed, I was removed from all of them. There's 16 different committees, and I was on one. And now, also, I would like to be more active in my community. I would like to make sure my District Two is being represented on the various committees here in town, at least a good portion, you know, equally to everyone else and being treated equally to everyone else. Also, I noticed that there are some where they meet at the same time, such as the Shaw and the Stand Cog. They both meet on the same Wednesday. And I'm just kind of curious why you would appoint yourself when you know you're on Stand Cog and you wouldn't be able to attend anyways. So, some of these overlap, and I'm just kind of curious. Other ones have been an alternate, and I've never been appointed, so I've never been even able to go. And then you still removed me, so I haven't been able to really be involved on these committees anyway. So, that was just kind of my comment as to, I'm just trying to find out. I know it's your personal preference, but I still think the city needs representation of all council members equally across the city committees.
And I will answer your questions in a moment. I have, I don't know if it was Otero or Serena. Go ahead.
So, I'm not sure what days and times that these meetings are held. I personally would like to recommend Councilmember Casey for the SWRA one. It looks like, I believe on that one. Yeah, that one I'd like to recommend. He take that one. And then also, Councilmember Vera, I believe she's mentioned working on some of the homeless issue. So, I feel that last year she was a alternate for the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance, and I'd like to see her, I'd recommend her be on the, on the current, for the current year as well. And if any, I'm open to trading any other committees. If it fits better with your guys' schedule, I'm open to making any changes.
Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that in '22, I was on one committee at the time. And it was how it fell. I didn't take it personal. Through movements like we're doing right now, I was appointed to two different ones. Councilmember Klein was also on very few, I believe, last year. Silvera was removed from a majority of them for myself. And Councilmember Vera, I do appreciate you moving us around and giving us other opportunities to work on different committees and learn. And that's all I wanted to say on that.
Mr. Casey?
Sure. I saw there was an alternate on the West Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Stability Agency, and I'd like to continue that.
Yeah, I would be fine with Mr. Casey taking the West Turlock as well.
Okay, so, right now, we can go ahead and start looking at the swaps, but I do want to make a comment because I think that it's, it's only fair. And I wrote this out because I think it's important to make this perfectly clear. Rosalinda Vera made a post the other day, and unfortunately, I felt that it was little misleading, an attempt to create unnecessary drama rather than offering positive policies or solutions for the city of Series. Once again, I felt that she's lying to the public. In 2024, Councilmember Vera and Councilmember Martinez were appointed to several committees. This was done to spread out opportunities fairly and to ensure that all council members could participate and contribute. Despite claims from the Series' career about the Vice Mayor Brett Silvera not being on major committees for reasons other than the truth, I have always sought to be fair and give every council member the chance to serve on multiple committees. Now, with the addition of the new council member, I am continuing the same fairness by assigning them to committees. After thoughtful consideration and for reasons I will not disclose here, I have also decided to place myself back on several key committees. Rosalinda's claims that District Two has no representation is false. Not only does this claim ignore the fact that I serve as the mayor of the city of Series, representing all districts and the constituents, not just a district, it also disregards the facts. She cut out the bottom of the committee on her post to suggest otherwise, to reflect that there was no appointments that I appointed her to. See, leadership is about service, collaboration, and progress. And unfortunately, the post demonstrates that Rosalinda is more interested in stirring up division and contributing to the positive growth of the city of Series, a common practice that has been repeated throughout her time on the council. As in previous years, there has always been the opportunity for swapping, because, for example, your question about SRWA, we meet at 12:00. So, there's been times where some members just could no longer meet at 12 o'clock. So, this is a great opportunity for members that feel they cannot perform those duties in those timeframes that we go ahead and start making those recommendations. And I would like to hear the recommendations again so we can make those changes now. And I see, Mr. Martinez, you have your, your button pressed?
I do. I was able to write it down, sir. So, item number 10, Ms. Otero would like to be removed in substitution for Councilmember Casey.
As an alternate?
No, she was the second on it.
Mr. Casey, 12 o'clock will be okay with you? Okay, thank you.
Then item 13, Councilmember Otero and myself would like to be removed in place for Councilmembers Vera and Casey.
13?
13.
Actually, we, I thought we no longer, that actually was removed because we no longer participate in that, the Tooluma River Regional Park Committee?
No, that's West Turlock Sustainability Groundwater.
Unless I'm looking at the wrong one here. So, number 10 was surface water, correct?
Yes, sir.
And number 13, oh, here it is. My apologies, different page. Okay, yes. So, 13, what was the goal?
Remove myself and Councilmember Otero and put in Councilmembers Casey and Vera.
Okay. Casey as the main or Vera as the main persons? Mr. Casey as the main, okay. Vera as the second. Is that okay, sir? What was the other recommendation? I'm sorry.
Item number 10, sir, removing Councilmember Otero in lieu of Councilmember Casey, who would like to remain on that committee.
Number 10, Redevelopment Commission Success for Agency?
10 online is the Surface Water Joint Powers Authority Board.
It's other page. I'm sorry. Number 10. So, 10 as an alternate, you would like to, who?
Not as an alternate. I'm currently the alternate on that item. It would be removing Councilmember Otero in lieu of Councilmember Casey.
Yeah, I got that one down already.
Okay.
Yeah. So, did you get that down, Fallon? Is there any other swapping or changes?
And then I just had recommended the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance. I'd like to see Councilmember Vera on that one. Number 14.
14? Number 14, have her as the main or have her as the alternate? Because right now it's Casey. So, how about remove me completely and have, you want to be?
You know, that's an example of what I talked about earlier. That meeting actually conflicts with another meeting I already have. I would suggest that Vera be the.
Me?
Primary, and maybe you be the alternate.
Okay. Okay, that'll work for me. Okay. Is there any other recommendations?
And then I just want to recommend for the future, if we do this every year, can I, can we get a list of the meeting days, meeting times, and then it gives us a chance to look at this before it's actually put on the agenda, so we're not wasting any time up here in front of the public?
And, you know, it's funny, because every year, there's been some changes throughout the year. I've never actually asked for that, but that is a great idea, actually. Miss Fallon, a little extra work for you. Other than that, I come back for a motion.
Mayor, we do need to open up for public comment.
Oh, thank you for that. Oran of order. Members of the public, any comments or questions? Going once, going twice? Thank you very much. Any other emails? Okay, I do bring this item back to the council for a motion and a second.
Make a motion to accept item D of the consent calendar, moving, removing item 10, Serena Otero, and replacing it with Councilmember Casey. On item 13, removing myself and Councilmember Otero and replacing it with Councilmembers Vera and Casey. And item 14, removing Councilmember Casey and replacing it with Councilmember Vera.
And looking for a second.
Quick clarification on that one, Vice Mayor. On item 14, I believe it was to swap and to have Councilmember Vera as the primary and Councilmember Casey.
Councilmember Casey currently is the primary, so removing him in lieu of her would put her as the primary.
Swap, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that is, so have we received that second?
And for 13, Casey's the main and Vera is alternate?
Yes. Yes, number 13.
Yeah, because that's my only concern, is I don't know when they meet, and if it's during the day, I may not be able to attend. I know a lot of these do meet during the day, during regular work hours.
And there is-
And I don't know if anyone else has time restrictions, because I think that's key to this discussion.
Yeah, there is flexibility, especially when, if times change, once after the appointments. And if you, if you don't have it now, Ms. Vera, obviously, if you cannot commit to it, we'll try to cover for you, is the goal.
They meet quarterly. And I do believe they have an upcoming meeting on the 23rd of this month, if I'm not mistaken.
6:00 PM, more than likely.
Yes, and it is held in the evening at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
So we, do we have a, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there any of the council members that would like an item pulled for further discussion? Rosalinda?
The only one I have is 14, and it's just a really quick question, just to confirm an item on, question on that one.
14? Any other council, Otero?
Item number 13.
13? Any other council members? Members of the public? Seeing none?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 1 through 12.
Second then.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item number two, resolution, approving the two-year agreement with Turlock. Youth Sports Foundation for Organizations and Contic of Youth Basketball Programs and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
So I just wanted to outline, I was talking with Joey, and he's done a great job of getting this basketball program to Series from Turlock Youth Sports Foundation. But just for information, it is a program similar to the flag football program. It will be held here in Series. Parents will not have to travel outside of Series for practices or games. This program will replace our current Hoopsters program. So I just want to make sure that the council understands that that program is, will be replaced with this one. And it looks like it's a two-year agreement, so, you know, if we decide later that this program is not working out for basketball, then maybe we can revisit Hoopsters and either advertise or figure out how we can bring that program back.
Thank you very much. Any other council members have any comments or questions on this item? I bring this out to the public, any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I bring this item back for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item 13 of the consent calendar?
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Councilmember, Rosalinda?
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item number 14, approving the construction contract with Paradigm Construction Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant administration building upgrade, authorizing a 20% contingency and authorizing city manager to execute this contract. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. My quick question, I guess, the staff, I'm assuming it's to Sam. I just want to confirm that this is not part of the contract with the upgrade, and it's not something we're going to have to tear down and rebuild under the new contract with the new dimensions and stuff for the new plant.
Ms. Vera, no, absolutely not. The buildings, the existing buildings would remain as is, we're not touching those, we're only doing the tertiary treatment side, and those buildings will not be affected.
Perfect, so this won't interfere with any of the upgrades or the space that they need? Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any members of the council that will have a comment or question? Take this to the public? Any members of the public? Mr. Warren? I was almost going to miss if you weren't going to speak.
Good evening, Council, John Warren, City of Series. Congratulations to the council members, Serena, for being here for the first meeting. I think my question was answered, but I wanted to be sure that with the upgrades of the sewer plant that are coming in the near future, because there's planning being done now, that we're not going to spend $400,000 and tear that building down and then waste those dollars when they shouldn't be wasted. So according to Sam, these upgrades are going to be permanent, and they're not going to be changing anything on the admin building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anyone else? Seeing none. I bring this item back for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item 14 of the consent calendar?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Moving on to discussion items. Consideration of the removal of the fishing restriction at River Bluff Regional Park Lower Terrace retention pond. Sam?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Tonight, I would like, I would like to discuss the ordinance issue with the fishing at the Lower Bluff. The city of Series River Bluff Regional Park Lower Terrace features a retention pond spanning approximately 241,280 square feet. This pond serves dual purposes, managing the storm runoff and providing a refuge area for the wildlife habitat. The pond is lined with a PVC geomembrane rubberized liner. This liner installed in 2006 ensures the year-round water retention and prevents seepage into the subgrade. Over the time, the liner has become increasingly susceptible to damage from sharp objects, including fishing gear that could puncture its surface. Due to those concerns and the observations of the fishing activities at the retention pond, the city council adopted an ordinance in April 10th of 2023. This ordinance prohibits recreational fishing in the retention pond to prevent damage to the liner and extend its lifespan. It's worth noting that the recreational fishing opportunities are available at the Toolumi River accessible from the Lower Bluff Terrace dock approximately 250 feet from the retention pond. Citizens can fish from the dock or utilize a ramp for canoe or raft access. At this point, I would like to have, I would like to discuss some directions, either we need to remove the fishing, non-fishing at the pond or leave the ordinance as is.
Okay, so today's discussion item does not require a motion, ladies and gentlemen. But we are open for discussion from the council members, and then we'll go to the public. There's, okay, I see the button pressed now. Mr. Martinez, go ahead, sir, Vice Mayor.
Sam, how, how old is that retention liner in the pond currently?
It was installed in 2006, so it's about 19 years old. And the lifespan of the liner itself, I checked with the manufacturer, it's about 20-year life, lifespan.
Have we had any punctures in the past or recently or anything, any issues?
No, if we, the obvious, the obvious sight would be if we have any bubbles and over, projecting over the water, that would indicate that there is a puncture of the liner.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional comments from the council? It's okay, I, I think it's important that we try to give Sam some kind of direction if this is something that is no longer a desire to move forward with, I think that should be the discussion as well.
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I just, I just wanted to clarify, there are four major tasks if we ever decide to change that liner.
Go ahead.
One of it, one would be, we would have to deal with the Fish and Wildlife State Agency to transfer the habitat from the, from the pond, and also draining the pond is a major issue, and reverting the vegetation surrounding the pond is another issue. So between, between the liner, back in 2006, it cost, the city paid about $166,000 for that liner to be installed. In today's, in today's standard, we're looking at $542,000.
Vice Mayor.
Sam, what impact would it be if we left the liner in the pond and allowed the people to return to fishing? What damages would happen?
Well, are we talking about the damage to the liner or?
To the ecosystem as well?
Well, we're not going to retain the water that, as I stated before, the liner was installed to ensure the year-round retention, water in the retention pond. If we decided, if we, if the liner wasn't there, we would have the ground soak it, and we would have to continuous, continually, you know, have water in the pond. And, and during the, during the winter season, we could have that, there's no issue, but in the summertime, there's no, there's no runoffs.
Okay, so our options are leave the ordinance as is or spend half a million dollars to remove the liner?
It could be more, Council.
Yes, let's go ahead and open this up to the public. Any members of the public that would like to make a comment on this item? Yes, sir.
Gentlemen said common sense, I mean, I would just, we could use that money for other things, so, you know, no fishing, I can fish elsewhere, so spend that money on traffic.
Thank you, sir. Any members of the public? Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, John Warren, City of Series. It's fairly obvious that the life of the liner is coming to an end. Are we going to have to replace it at some time in the near future? Or will it maintain the way it is right now?
Yes, the liner has a certain thickness that is, that they would guarantee for 20 years, but it could last a lot longer, as long as you don't jeopardize it. It becomes really brittle at that point. Soon as you puncture one area, it could lead to another, and it'll be a domino effect after.
Is there any way to tell what the condition of the liner is today? Has it, do we know if we have any seepage or leakage underneath?
No, the obvious thing, I mean, if we are still maintaining the water in the pond, we're not losing that, so that tells us that the liner is still holding.
It's that common sense thing that I think Jane just mentioned, that we probably don't allow the public to fish there. They can go over to the river, and there's quite a bit of access along, along the river for that activity, and this is something that the city needs to guard and make sure that the liner doesn't become compromised. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anyone else? Sir?
Mr. Mayor, Council, is that liner repairable? If there is an incident where it starts to leak?
Go ahead, Serena.
Okay, yes, it is repairable, absolutely. But at this point, if you start repairing that, we don't know exactly what, to what extent are we repairing. It could be a small area that we're dealing with, but soon as we start draining the water and start repairing that, other areas might fail. So we're taking a big risk.
Making one end stronger than the other.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Yekley?
On the issue of that pond, if it's going to cost in the future hypothetically half a million dollars or more, what would it cost to line it with cement? We could call it the cement pond, just like the Beverly Hillbillies. Is there feasible things to do with cement? Are other communities, if they have ponds like that, are they lined with cement? And what is the longevity of a cement lining? Now, I don't know the circumference or the depth of that pond, but half a million dollars for plastic seems like a lot of money. We've all seen those commercials on TV, and the gentleman asks what it can do if there's a puncture. Hey, on TV, they got that stuff that can patch it underwater, you know? But I don't think we want to do that, but cement might be an answer, you know? Whoever wanted that small contract? Is it feasible?
I don't, Sam, do you actually have an answer to that?
Yes, I do.
Oh, wow.
I mean, the cement has a, could crack. There's no guarantee that the cement will not crack, so you're taking that chance also. I mean, look at the, look at the TID line, canals, you know, they have, they have a pretty thin liner, and they have cracks all the time, so.
You're talking about like the Aqua Duck canals?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're leaking all the time, too?
They, no, they're not leaking, but they're being maintained every year, and we can't afford to have that being done to the pond.
Yeah, so you'd have to drain it, and there'd be a cost of that, and then you had to fill it back up again, right? There's got to be another alternative besides that plastic liner. I know. Put your heads together.
Thank you for the, thank you for the recommendation. Is there anybody else in the public that has any additional comments? Seeing none. I bring this item back. Mr. Martinez, you have your button pressed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had a question to sort of piggyback off of what Mr. Warren, where his train of thought was going. You said it's a 20-year longevity for that. What's the manufacturer's recommendation of when to replace it, Sam?
I mean, once we start having an issue with the liner, then we'd have no choice but to do that, Council. I mean, at this point, as long as you don't jeopardize the liner, I would recommend to leave it the way it is, because the thickness of that liner is thick enough to hold on for an additional 20 years. But the guaranteed liner is only for 20 years. It is just like any other material. I mean, you could have a pipe that is, has a life of 70 years, but after, after 75 years, it could fail. There is a possibility that it could, but no one could guarantee that.
Okay, and I'm going to guess that their guarantee doesn't, you know, protect against puncture wounds and things of that from fishing?
Correct, at this point, no. It'll, your jeopardy is in the warranty, which I think we, we might have like another year because it wasn't installed in 2006.
Thank you. Councilmember Otero.
So I understand how important this would be to many who are fishers, especially those that like to take their children down there. But at this time, I think with that kind of cost, we need to use that cost for other things. We have, we're hurting in our police department, we're hurting in other areas, so I like to see that, that funding go towards something else. I feel that maybe we should plan for the future. I know that, I was looking at the strategic plan that we have and maybe we can update it and figure out how we can make some upgrades to that, the lower river bluff area for future use. But right now, I don't think it's something that we should move forward with.
Nubia, is it appropriate to say, per discussion, if council member has an idea to do an update to that plan, is that appropriate?
Sounds like this might be good as a council referral item.
Okay, there you go. And then for the sake, excuse me, I have no further questions. Councilmember Rosalinda.
Thank you. I want to agree with, with Otero. I totally think that we shouldn't worry or have to look at replacing the liner or putting in cement, draining the pond. Right now, with it being used the way it is, I don't know if we necessarily even, although I love the idea of fishing, that's what started the whole conversation, is wanting to take my grandchildren out there. I do like the idea of maybe making a pier or something where the children, maybe we can go out there, because I do have three grandchildren, and being able to take them to go fishing, because we do right now go out towards, you know, the Grayson area and we go out to Park, Laird Park to go fishing. But maybe we can work on doing something like that, that would be children-appropriate, as opposed to some of the chemicals that are coming off the grasses and the yards and the car washes and other stuff that's going in the community that's being washed down the drain, since that is just, just really storm drain water from the parks and the community. But maybe we can look at ways of trying to integrate, and I know you have young children as well, Martinez, and I'm sure they probably like to go fishing like my grandchildren, they're about the same age. And so maybe we can look at, if we do come across money at some point, in redeveloping some of that area for the children and the families. I love the idea, thank you, Serena.
Is there additional comments from the council? So with a nod of the heads, that we, is the recommendation that we just leave it the way it is? Left or right? Yes. Right? Yes. I'll go ahead and open it up again.
What is the pond and what's the purpose?
She's asking what, what the original.
The pond is, is you have a wildlife habitat living there that was part of the improvement that was awarded to the, to the city back in 2000 and probably three or four, I'm not sure, I don't have the history of it, but that was part of the agreement.
It was put in to be for fishing, right? Or are we just protecting some?
No, I mean, it wasn't stocked, it was just a pond, it was named.
It has no purpose.
No, no, for wildlife it does. It's, it's a lower terrace, we wouldn't like to bring the wildlife to it.
It shouldn't be fishing for the wildlife, right? I, I'm really confused on the purpose of the pond.
The wildlife is like, you have.
Is it available to the public or not for the public? Is it to save wildlife or is it, I don't understand.
The wildlife is like when you have the ducks, the geese.
Elephant for the city.
Okay, are you going to let me talk?
I might consider it.
Okay.
Sam, point of order. Sam, is there any additional comments or questions?
Well, he was going to talk. Nope.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, so we have Mr. Casey, before you point in that direction, nods of word to no longer pursue with the action was all yes and Ms. Vera, so are you, yes, he's done. Okay, we are moving on. Thank you. Now we move on to council member referrals. We'll start from left, if there's any council member referrals. The one you were referring to earlier.
Yeah, so I would like to look at the strategic plan, 2020 to 2021, and update that and just take a look at what currently has been completed, what still needs to be completed in the future.
With that recommendation, everybody knows the process, we're okay with that? I'm okay with that?
The process, Mayor, is a quick reminder, is a council member referral that's made from the dais will be documented and brought back for consensus at the next meeting.
So, so we're just fine with the referral?
Right.
Thank you for clarification, Rosalinda. Is there any additional, Mr. Martinez, I just saw your button pressed.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a referral to look into getting a volunteer group or volunteers to work with code enforcement to help them go out in the community and find blight issues or any sort of code infractions that they could give to the code enforcement officers. That's a referral I'd like to make.
Got that, Fallon. All right. Any referrals on my right side?
Mr. Mayor, I'm confused. I thought the referral section was that we were supposed to bring something to the city manager, have it officially entered as a referral.
Well, point for clarification.
And then we would decide, there's a council to follow through with that, but I thought it had to be documented on the agenda. You know, I brought a few referrals, most of which have been voted down by the council. I didn't know it could just, I mean, I guess I'm not prepared to do any referrals, but going forward, I can bring a referral just out of the wind like this?
Just for clarification.
Yes, so councilmember Casey, the process is, the preferred method for council member referrals is to direct it to the city manager to be included on an agenda for future consideration. That's correct. However, a council member may make a referral from the dais, but it will not be up for a consensus at that moment. We will agendize it and then bring it back. So in essence, there's a two-step process or a three-step process. You can speed it up by having staff included on the agenda as you have in the past, and then it will be taken for a vote. These two referrals that were made today will be included on the agenda for the next council meeting for a consensus vote, to move forward with it or not.
So it has not been approved?
These have not been approved, they've just been placed in the queue for consideration.
Thank you. So that being the case, I'd like to have a referral that in this year that we're going to be renewing our contract with the city of Modesto for Fire, I'd like to have a referral that we include some citizens outside of the measure age and the council so that we can have that. And a second referral would be that we improve our public communication to the general public about public hearings. Oftentimes, we have a public hearing and it's, tonight we have a good crowd of people, but oftentimes it's two or three, we have a public hearing, there's, the public's not here to give their input. I think we need to put that in the, delay the public hearing until it goes out at least twice in the utility bills, no other way, but we need to improve our communication to the general public.
There's two right there. Fallon, you got that? She got that, councilmember. Thank you very much. Moving on to reports, I have nothing to report. Councilmembers on left, nothing to report on that side. Councilmember Rosalinda Vera.
I do, thank you, Mayor. The first thing I know, I got a couple emails and phone calls today already, and I want to let them know that I've already sent emails out regarding the accident on Morgan and San Pedro this morning. I was the car right behind the Jeep that T-boned into the Toyota, so that was very scary for me at the moment. And so I'm aware that we have yet another accident on San Pedro and Morgan. Again, the person stopped at the stop sign and proceeded through into the intersection as another car was coming. So it wasn't like a four-way stop would have necessarily made a difference if the person's running a stop sign or not stopping or is failing to yield. So I just want to let you know, I know I talked to the owner who last time had a car in his swimming pool, I think it was about a year ago, so I did talk to him this morning when I was out there, and I've already started the discussions with the engineer, city manager, and even our police department. Secondly, at the Stennis Homeless Alliance meeting, we did continue the discussions. Tuscany Village is back on the market. It looks like there is a closing date soon. I don't know if we're going to get any offers on what the next step is. I have had some conversations with some developers, but I guess the price right now, because the amount of liens that are on the property, may not get any bids at what they're asking for. And then we're also, I was waiting for, at the, regarding the Stennis Homeless Recovery Center to see if we're going to be able to move forward with the county with possibly making transitional housing now that there are some funds available. Again, they've had some interactions with the city many years ago that were very negative. I have informed them that we have all new directors and they are all very delightful to work with, including planning, we've got new engineering, even our economic developer, everyone, even our city manager. So we have all new staff and so I've assured them that they are very pro-development, they're not going to tell them we don't want to do the work, even our council here I'm sure would be happy to engage in these discussions. So we are trying to work and move forward in these discussions. It is definitely not something that's an easy conversation to have, but we've been working on this for a year, just trying to get them to allow us to even just engage in the conversation. And now that there is some money available, I'm working with Ruben Imperial to see if the county is willing to move forward on using some of those empty buildings that are slowly deteriorating over at the old Memorial Hospital, for those of you who are a little, been in series for a while, and to see if we can kind of utilize those buildings before we have to tear them down because they're just deteriorating over time. But that's it, as for me, thank you.
Mr. Casey? Never mind, okay, that's fine, no worries. And I'll go ahead.
Really quick, I just want to thank city staff for being welcoming my first, you know, month of being on the city council. Everyone's been helpful in answering my questions and I'll try to get with most of you to meet and as the next few months come, go on.
Thank you very much. City manager? City Attorney's Office?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report? And departments? Chief, go ahead, sir.
I have one thing to report. I wanted to let you guys know that about 10 months ago, you approved to have, to allow us to send three recruits to the police academy. And I'm happy to report to you today that those recruits finished the police academy. They were assigned on the field training program at our police department. They've successfully completed their field training program and they are currently working today as solo police officers here in the City of Series.
That's great, that's great, thank you so much.
I also wanted to report that this morning, we swore in four new police officers, along with two dispatchers.
Congratulations again.
Recruitment and retention is, is one of our priorities right now. We are still down seven officers, but we're still working diligently on the hiring process and I will not stop until we are fully staffed.
Thank you for that, chief. Appreciate that. I'll ask again, anyone else from the departments? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. No, you didn't have your hand up, did you? No, you did not, okay. Did you actually?
Yeah, Mayor, it was the last second. I just wanted, I just want to let council know and the public that the leaf and limb program ended January 9th and January 10th, we're going to, Bird Light is going to start offering the, the new service that we, that we approved last, last year.
Is that posted on the website? I couldn't find nothing on the website about that.
Yes, it, it should be, it should be on the website and it should be on the monthly staff report.
The front page?
Uh, I'm not sure, Mayor, I could double check.
Yeah, someone was asking me where they could find it if they were to just go on the website and I didn't take the time to fully look, but it's somewhere on there, right?
Yep, yep, it is.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll now go into closed session for conference with legal counsel regarding anticipation of litigation. California Government Code 549569D2, a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, California Government Code 549569D1, and the conference regarding liability and claims, California Government Code 5495695. Claimant is Whitmore Stations Incorporated, Gerdip, SHAG, and agency claim against the City of Series. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding this closed session item? And after this, we will report out. We have other closed session items as well, I don't need to read those, right? Okay, this meeting is adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, this meeting is adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.
Welcome back everyone for item number sixteen and seventeen, direction has been given to staff. And for items number eighteen, claim has been accepted five oh. Thank you.